Good evening, like to welcome you to the May 6, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. And it looks like we do have a quorum. The first item on the agenda then would be to consider approval of the minutes from April 22nd. Now would entertain a motion to do so.
I'll make a motion to.
Motion.
All right, well, second.
Motion submitted.
Motion by Robinson, a second by Caravelo. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, not opposed, that carries. Council representative report. In the past, all the person Bartlett has given this report. I don't know if anybody wants to volunteer going forward. We don't necessarily need to report on anything tonight, do we?
Actions were consistent with Planning Commission recommendations. Chickens, I think we had chickens and bees.
Yeah.
And a couple of ETJs that were recently counselled.
So I guess I'm looking for a volunteer going forward to kind of bring anything that goes through the council or any updates back to here. Any of you two guys interested?
I can, I can give it a shot.
Okay, I'm sure you'll do just fine. Basically what you'll do is just, anything that goes through council, just make a note. And when we have the next Planning Commission meeting, you can just give an update during this time if there's anything.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for doing that. Next item would be staff report, that's coming from Rodney.
Really just a brief summary of projects that have gone through the Planning Commission, some more recently than others, but if there's any questions related to that, or if you'd like additional detail on something, let us know and we can provide more detail on specific projects going forward.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that? Hearing none. Item number five on the agenda is a request by Dale Besky for extraterritorial land division approval at 1345 Tower Drive in the town of Dunkirk. And we're looking for a recommendation to council. Dale is here. Certainly if, if you have any questions, it looks like he'd like to speak. We don't really have it posted for a public hearing, but what is the practice been?
Certainly if there's questions of, of the applicant, we'd entertain those. I can just give you a brief overview in the packet, I think it's described quite well. This is out on the corner of US Highway 51 and Tower Drive. And you can see what they're attempting to accomplish is add to the parcel to accommodate the septic field that's not on the actual parcel of land. So that's the substance of their quest to make the lot larger to encompass that area into this parcel.
Okay. Do you have any questions for either Rodney or for Dale that's here? Dale, did you have anything you wanted to say, or?
I.
You're good?
I'm, I'm good.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion for a recommendation to city council.
And I'll make that motion to.
Motion by Robinson, a second.
I'll second.
Second by Caravelo. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, not opposed, that carries. Thank you. Thank you. Item number six, so that'll go to city council on.
Next Tuesday.
Uh, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah, there is a public comment at the beginning. Feel free to speak, you don't have to, or if you'd like to email the council members, you could do that as well. We meet here at seven o'clock.
Thank you.
You bet. Number six was a request by Paul Rockwell for a certified survey map. Approval split to the lot at 409 Lowell Street, city of Stoughton. Director Scheel.
Just a quick overview, this is actually within the city of Stoughton, between Lowell Street and Milwaukee Street. Containing your packet, you'll see on the upper page is Lowell Street and Milwaukee Street. This was a larger parcel that extended ahead frontage on both Lowell and Milwaukee. The request is to split it to create a second buildable parcel along Milwaukee Street. For people familiar with the area, you'll recognize there are several properties along this Milwaukee Street stretch that there are houses constructed. This is one that has not had a split to allow for that construction of a house on, would be Lot 2 as proposed.
Do we have a recommendation?
Staff, it meets the minimum lot sizes. It seems like a logical infill location is certainly consistent with the, the neighborhood.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners? Otherwise I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Schumacher, a second.
I'll second.
By Caravelo. And any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, not opposed. So that recommendation will go to council as well next Tuesday. Item number seven is a request by Forward Development Group to amend the comprehensive plan related to Kettle Park West Phase 2. And it looks like we have two different things on here to discuss. The first one would be the public comment period for the comprehensive plan amendment. And.
No one is here for it, but I've.
Anybody in the audience like to speak to this? Nobody's here, is there anything to report from the last time?
I think they'll walk through that a little bit with what.
Okay.
And the packet includes some as well.
All right, so that would be the bullet point. Number two is to discuss the comments from the public event. Is there anything new we want to present before we get into that?
Well, there were about a half a dozen people at that meeting. I think most of y'all were there last, last week. So basically, nothing new. There's been a few suggestions we're trying to incorporate into the plan, you know, into the future. And other than that, we're really here to answer questions or discuss any other points that, that we want to bring up, so.
Seems like we might want to touch on a few of the slides that Jim provided to answer some of those questions about the look and the feel of the neighborhood. So if we wanted to do that, I could advance to those and you could talk through those. Does that sound?
What I did is I, after our discussion, we had referenced a few locations around the Madison area where there is a relatively narrow lot product out there with the, these are all houses served by alleys. And this refers to the, the one part of the, what we're proposing, it's on the east side, southeast side of Oak Open Drive. And there's a, two blocks of also slightly larger single-family homes, but also alleys served. And what I wanted to do is provide some examples of what type of house fits on these lots and, and I can tell you where these are and you can take a field trip and go look at them and get a feel for the neighborhood. But they're very popular, they've been quite successful, I think, in, in construction as well as, and attracting new families into the, those neighborhoods. This one is in, now I get them all mixed up. I went to several different places. Swan, the Swan Creek is in Fitchburg, it's on Sine and East Cheryl Parkway. Maybe a block away from Swan Creek is another area that's on the east side of Sine Road. The property that's underdeveloped now is Argus Street, and there's actually a couple little streets in there, so if you're driving around. There's a site in Sun Prairie, two sites in Sun Prairie, one, one's on the north side, that's Liberty Park or Liberty something, please. And then there's also Smith's Crossing. And then there's a couple sites in Madison that are on the west side, just off Mineral Point as you're traveling west from the belt line. You go out there, you'll see these. And so what I did is I went out and I took some pictures and we also went to basically Google Earth and downloaded, you know, the image of what these look like, so you can get a feel for how they, how they shape up. This is a.
Oops, sorry.
It's probably a 45 to 50 foot wide lot. Has a real nice street frontage. What we're proposing, the house is going to be a little bit closer to the sidewalk, so it gives you a little bit more pedestrian feel to the front. Where you can, you can develop a really nice house front on, on these properties. In the background, you can see the garage door opening from the house that's on the other side of the alley. So that's, these are all alleys served. And the next one, this is a lot, this is in.
Quick question on that first one.
Yeah.
If you're going to move them closer to the sidewalk, will there still be room for the tree? Because I think that's going to be important.
There's, there'll be trees, trees of course in the street terrace, which would be this side of the sidewalk between the curb.
Right.
And then between the sidewalk and the house, the issue really is getting a tree or some kind of landscaping in there because you often have, the gas isn't breaking on the sidewalk. So there may be room for some trees definitely in between the houses potentially. And we can adjust that, maybe, maybe you want to say, maybe it should be 15, give you a helping for a tree or some more landscaping. Or, well, we're thinking through the covenants right now of how much of the front face of the house should be occupied by the porch. And whether that porch like bumps out from the house and then the house itself is, you know, at a few more feet. So there's, there's options there, and we're trying to work through some of those design things. But what we've reserved, at least in the planning maps that you've seen, those lots are basically 40 to 45 to 48 feet wide and 105 to 110 feet long deep. So they're like a four to 5,000 square foot lot, which is plenty of room to begin to shift that house back and forth. The critical part about doing this kind of subdivision though is to have that consistent edge, that urban edge to it. So you, all your porches are basically in line, that's what gives you the character of the neighborhood. So we want to come up with a, you know, standard covenants on that. And then, and quite honestly, they all, they, if you've been in these neighborhoods, they all feel better if you're in the house, first floor is maybe one or two steps up, like you see here. It just gives you a better feel for the way the house sits. And it also allows you to have a lot of lights in the basement, windows in the basement on the lower level.
Is the minimum setback on the sidewalks, is that the same for this lot product, or is that the same regardless of anywhere in the city?
This particular, it varies by, well, varies by community. Right now in Stoughton, I believe the front setback is like 25 feet.
In most locations.
In most locations. So this four block area in the plant, of what we're planning, would be by plan development ordinance. So we'd be writing specific setback requirements just for this four block area. So that it'd be slightly closer than what you see here in this kind of thing, it will still give you that front yard feel. You can envision, oh, that front yard framed by a, you know, an iron fence or a short picket fence or shrubbery. And you think back to some of these older neighborhoods and see you get that feel. The important part when you keep, keeping kind of the street character is between the sidewalk and the curb. That's where you want to have that kind of space, that pre-terrace area.
Okay. Any other questions on this slide before we go ahead?
I might just make a comment that, in my, my opinion, might be that that particular tree may be even too big for that space. Because it's going to, if you picture that leafed out, I mean, it's actually taller than the house and leafed out, you're not going to see the, any of the front of the house. And they may be trying to screen something across the street, but I don't know if you necessarily need a terrace or a, a space between the sidewalk and the house to accommodate trees that size. If you look to the right, the, the tree that's up in front of the White House, there might be a little bit more to scale that you'd be looking for along this kind of a.
Yeah, you have to kind of, you'd have to be real specific on what landscaping and what street trees growing in. But in this case, that bump that's right in front of the house, that's a river bush, tends to be fairly dense and fast growing, that's why people like to use it. But as you get out into the street terrace, basically you want a taller tree that then branches out. Remember the old elm-lined streets, you know, that we had this big coloner tree and then it kind of arched over the street, that's the kind of image that you want to go on street trees. So you want to be careful to treat that kind of, as opposed to putting in a, a calorie pair, which tends to be shorter and real dense, you want to get a tree that goes up and then branches out. So.
Is that.
When you do this type of product, you really have to get into, you have to integrate the landscaping as the streetscape, as well as kind of what the front of the house functions.
So is that part of the ordinance or part of the PUD that is developed?
It'd be a discussion or something we should bring up in the ordinance, in that PDE document.
And who does that?
We would prepare it and then you.
It's ultimately what the city council would act on. The zoning standards are established for each, for the district.
So it'll come through here.
And the council.
And through the council?
Yeah.
So you'd have a chat, we'll, we'll kind of craft what we think is going to work well and create this, and then you guys can, we can talk through those details as we get into it.
Okay.
One, one final one. Did you ever go in, did you go into any of these homes at all, or?
I have not been into any of these houses, they're all.
Okay.
Probably not classified.
I wonder if, I was trying to look into one as they were building it on, on Sine Road there, and I wondered if they had done different materials, if they'd done two by six construction in the front of it for noise control because they're so much closer to the road.
Good point. I don't know, I think the, the thing to do would be to find that, you know, I'm sure there's probably models.
Right.
And go in and take a walk through to get a feel for the inside of the house.
Mm-hmm.
And do you know that what, sometimes when you get, now this, these two examples here of these three houses have a fairly generous side yard. And some of the neighborhoods, you'll see that scrunched together. And so what that does is it really affects the kinds of windows that you put on the side of the house. Sometimes you'll see a completely blank wall, mainly from a, a fire code issue, but then you'll, in other places, you'll see one that have the, kind of the smaller lights that are up in the upper part of the platinum, upper part of the wall that you see above a fireplace or something. And you do that one because you want air and light entering the house, but you also want some sense of privacy, so you're not, you know. I can remember living in a house in Madison in school where you can literally, you know, hand the salt shaker to the person in the dining room of the house. We're not going to go that narrow.
Okay. Any other questions, otherwise we'll keep going. And feel free to jump in anytime because now's a good time to do this, otherwise, you know, these guys aren't really sure, you know, what our expectations are.
This one, this is more of a, and this is a newer addition, I believe this is in brand new towns. But what I wanted to show you is that, is the variety of house style, roof style that you'll see on the front. So you want two-story, a one-story, go out a, a story and a half, gables, trying to create that eclectic mix of housing on the, on the, on the one in the street. You don't want to revert back to the Levitan model where every house is exactly identical. You want to encourage a variety here. And that's, that's really up to the developer, builder, is ever going to take on this stuff, or if they're all offered as individual built suit. You want to make sure that there's the opportunity there to encourage a variety of housing.
Can see these are closer, there's not even landscaping, very much landscaping in front of these particular homes.
And you see the red one on the corner, that second gable, of that red desk in the garage, that's off the alley, and the blue one is behind you. Here's just another example, these are, these two houses are much closer, a more than close relationship to the gray one is a corner lot, and so it's going to have a different kind of exposure in it, a sweep, probably more windows. You can see there's very, I don't believe there is a window at the side of the red house. That's simply a, a design standard and kind of a respecting of privacy consideration for the, that owner and that president. But again, burnt porches, how that parlor are treated, again, a couple steps up from the sidewalk. The one, the red house also has a step in the sidewalk, so rather than everything right up by the porch entrance, it, it three steps up as you're walking to the house from the sidewalk. Now, let's see, this is in Smith's Crossing. This is just the alley entrance and this, what you see right there in this particular one, they put a, a common parking lot, you know, for guest parking. I can place that first space there to the left, so. You can see that, the red house on the, the right doesn't have any windows and that's like, doesn't belong at entry alley into the neighborhood. I think I have the, an overhead of Smith's Crossing. Now you can see the, the image that's on the right-hand side, I'll, I'll put that in here to illustrate two items here. First of all, the, the left row of houses, those houses all front onto open space with the sidewalk. This is identical to the scenario that we're proposing in, in our project, the houses that are, face that open space to the east, there's a large attention upon insurgency. Those houses would face onto a sidewalk, that's how you would get to those, those front doors. Otherwise, everything is through the, the alley. You can also get a feel for the, how much of the lot that the house occupies. Now, these lots are slightly shorter than what we've proposed, and you can see that the house itself occupies a considerable portion of that lot. These are smaller, you know, these are 40, probably 43 by maybe 100 or 95. So, you know, between the garage, you have a little connecting hallway, perhaps a deck area, and then the main part of the house. So that's this particular design, that gives you a feel for how they look in the neighborhoods from there. And, and what more?
Is it?
Have any?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Dale.
I just, you, in that one picture that had the parking lot for guests in that corner lot, and I know I don't see a feature like that in, in your plan, but then there's the, as I zoom in on this one, there's like back towards the eastmost piece of the, of your plan, there's like a, a couple of parking lot designated areas.
That's kind of the scenario, if you want to back up a few slides to the plan. They can see Jackson Street comes through and they go opening and you get right in, right there, that's where we put this kind of parking area.
How many spaces were you?
You know, I don't remember, it's probably eight to 10 on either end. And it's primarily for guest parking. And that's remember, we made these lots slightly deeper than, than the other ones we saw because we would have a, a protection for a garage apron, so that's, we got two stalls in the garage, two stalls out of the garage, and guest parking would be either on Oak Open Drive or in these little spaces that are kind of dividing even the, people who come to visit. They'll have to walk or they'll park in the driveway and hop to the open.
Another thing, not associated with parking, but in the, the last slide that we were looking at that had the, an example of the houses pretty close together, I was just thinking, for those people living in those houses or in this plan, there's not going to be much option for opening up the door to the yard to let the dog out in their fenced-in enclosed yard, is not really going to be a, that's not going to be a thing for them.
Yeah. And that's why you have this open space, this common open space, that's what was, that acts as, you know, for a pet run for small dogs. In the neighborhood, we have quite a malaria open space or on the, on the land, on the con area that's usable for dog walks. And that's, that's one of the things we thought about, when you get into this, this kind of density, you, you don't have a lot of, you don't have any yard space to be, you have to create that park that's easily accessible. And then you have to create space for the old pets.
I've got one, one other question on the, showing that aerial view. Have any, have any neighborhoods built like this experienced a fire that we know of? And how, that just reminds me of like old London, you've got so many buildings all stuck together, so then your fire response becomes really critical.
I have not heard of any fire incident in, in, kind of, in, of recent times in this kind of neighborhood. Certainly the, the alley access and the turning movement in the alley, that's big enough to handle a fire truck. In this particular case, the public street that you can, on the left side of that open space. We have contemplated and done it in other locations where that, that sidewalk that 's near the house, essentially you have a dual sidewalk, if the sidewalk, green space and another sidewalk, it's designed to accommodate the, the apparatus to drive down. That's, I think that's probably, we usually have done that during the, as a true town hall situation, where it's a true town hall. But in this particular case, because of the placement of the fire hydrants and the access to, probably the street hydrant, we don't really think that, the fire truck doesn't want to get that close to the house anyway, so. A little bit more problematic, you got a, a smaller building, it's going to have a three-story building and a big aerial apparatus than, than a normal house is easier to fight with.
Brett's question kind of reminds me of something that happened around our region, maybe west side of Madison or Sun Prairie a few years ago, where there was, I think, a garage fire in a house, and then the news stories the next day had pictures and adjacent houses were melted.
Oh, yeah, that one, I remember that one, it was downtown, wasn't it?
Basically their siding had just melted off, yeah.
I think it's just important to point out that this style of housing is not for everybody. We can't apply the same kind of standards you might for other suburban developments. You know, people who are looking for more yards and, and bigger open space will look for a different neighborhood. But there's a select market that is looking for this kind of relationship between their neighbors, this kind of relationship with open space. They'd rather not have the green space in their own yard that they have to maintain, they'd rather walk out into a shared public space. And so, you know, we can't always apply the same kinds of expectations for pets or whatever for this kind of neighborhood because it's a different market, different customer group.
And in, to that end, in the scheme of things, the narrow lots are not the entire neighborhood. We have the transitions from these smaller lots to a little bit larger lot, for then a more conventional, uh, single-family home of 60 feet wide and 130 feet deep, if you give it. Lots of older planes, I guess, that were.
I'd say the only counterpoint to, yes, they're selling right now, but are they going to be selling the same in 25 years? I mean, we've got no crystal ball for that, but it would be a shame if that went out of favor and then, because they're not what would be a conventional home, and then you've got large vacancies sitting there. But again, no crystal ball, so.
Who maintains the common area then? Who manages that?
The common areas would be by homeowners association.
So the alleyway and the green space?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else that would be under that?
To my knowledge, that association would handle stubborn, it could handle yard maintenance, you know, but in a relatively small, small yards, like simply to hire some kids over and over there.
I can't find a kid to do mine anymore.
It's too big.
I can barely get mine to do my own.
Okay, any more questions on this?
Other items from the meeting?
Well, is, is that, I, I take it pulling together these series of photos was because the comments that were received at the public meeting were largely about the aesthetics and the size of the lot?
That was, we saw the comments that came up, you know, I'd make sure that.
Future agenda items.
Had, had kind of what the expectation of what it could look like.
A little more visual.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's hard to represent in a, just a drawing on a flat piece of paper, and I'll show these elevations.
Well, this is helpful to us. I haven't received any feedback written or phone message since our last meeting, and I don't know if anybody else has heard really much communication at all from the public. I mean, we'll continue to put this out there, I think, you know, for tonight, that's all you wanted to present, right?
Yeah. Because what we'll do, our next step is really to take, from the conversations tonight and from the last, uh, public information, I mean, plus the conversation we've had over the last couple of months, we'll generate that, a more concise document that would be in the actual conference, the plan amendment, the post, or kind of articulate these things. Because we, we didn't want to get too hard on macro, if there's some big issue that you want to wrestle with first.
So it's, it sounds like the housing standards might be something we'd be interested in.
We'll do all some guidelines, architectural guidelines, and, and rolled into the, the plan. We'll develop some guidelines, architectural guidelines that's rolled into the, that planning document. Ordinance, that language. That's, really, that's where the, where the government needs to know the criteria.
Okay. Go ahead, Phil. Just looking at these different maps that were in the packet, it's a little bit hard for me to keep track of timeline, to differentiate what, you know, what map came before what map or what is the latest revision.
There was a error.
But yeah, if there's a way to, just going forward with any other revisions and everything, to just down in that lower left corner where there's been dates, so we can keep track of where we are.
For you and me both, we're a lot of different, keeping track of the blood process of issues. Trying to evolve in time. But it's a little picture that we're making chronological order, whatever sequence we need to start, a big discussion. But it gives the actual planning doctor, probably not going to have a lot of discussion. The district, I'm not there. I have a little bit of a sort of a.
Did you have something, Tom?
Yes, thanks. I guess I just don't want to gloss over this and not say that when you look at the general building and community in this city, it differs very much from this kind of concept. And this is almost like, um, you know, a different, totally different kind of development on the edge of the neighborhood. I, I'm not saying that we should stay in the same development at all, but just the closeness, the alley entry, the fact that you have no windows on some of those buildings on one side because you don't want to be looking in your neighbor's windows. Very much out of the character of this city. And I don't mean that we can't do something new at all. But I, I do think there's some, there should be some concern that we are, we are developing this in a way that we didn't start out to develop it a year ago and, at least that I knew of. And it's, it's going to change the nature of a certain section of the city and the clientele that buy the houses. So it's something to think about. I'm not saying it's wrong. Things change. But it seems like a, a place that isn't, isn't going to fit in very well to the city as a whole. But that doesn't mean there isn't a need for people who both can, can tolerate, I shouldn't say tolerate, who, who can live with that situation. But it's certainly something quite a ways away from what I think we were talking about when we started working on Kettle Park West.
And I think one of the things that is in the packet is the housing unit forecast sheet. And I think that kind of has an interesting summary in it when it talks about the types of units and how many. And really, at the end of the day, the density is going down, even though the houses are closer together. It's still not as much density as we would have had with the multi-unit. So I think that's kind of an interesting sheet to really contemplate and really try to digest and see how we feel like, you know, how we feel about that going forward. Because I think that really gives an accurate summary of it. And some of it may be in the eye of the beholder. But certainly, you're right. It does change really where we started and where we're at. I think there's some positive change in that, but not everybody might see it that way. Or they may see certain aspects of it they like or don't like versus the first, the first go around. But as we go through this, anything that you think of that you think might improve it, I think these guys are certainly, you know, open to listening to it. I think they've already made a lot of adjustments based on the feedback that they've received from us, from the parking rack and from utilities to get to this point. And I don't think just because we did this presentation tonight that the work is done. I think it's really just beginning.
I don't want to design the whole thing by myself, so I'd suggest.
Yeah. So, so I'll just, two comments. One is, I mean, when you look at it from that perspective, Mayor, you do have, if you looked at it as an apartment, then certainly a lot of the interior apartments have less windows than these units are going to have. So if, if the issue is not enough windows, I mean, apartment complexes have much less for interior units and even a lot of condominiums as well. But if you scroll ahead to the picture set, to the second picture, where you were showing the different front facades. Back up. That one. I am guessing that for Stoughton, this might be too far in the direction of being close to sidewalk with, without any landscaping. I mean, my guess is that this won't be as well received as the slide before, where you have a little bit more green space. I think this is probably a little bit more of a comfort level than, and again, we, we could talk about, you know, what's the right distance between sidewalk and, and, and front facade. And I think it wouldn't hurt to actually know what the actual distance is on some of these pictures so that we can kind of tie a number to a picture.
I can certainly go up and begin to.
Trump around in someone's yard and.
I've got pride. I can run.
Yeah.
But I'd encourage you to go up.
And take a look ourselves.
Walk up and down the sidewalk, see what it feels like. That's really, that's really what it comes down to.
And as far as the windows, is there a rule of thumb typically on what you would have on a square footage? I mean, I know you're doing the basement for Egress. And, and I think that's actually a law or something. But as far as something.
I'm not aware of any standards that's really, there's, there's probably some fire code issue that requires certain openings. But it depends on what the classification of building is.
Because I guess what I'm hearing, there's at least one suggestion that in the, in the plan development standards, that you include something in there so that's addressed. Is that what you're suggesting? As far as.
That might get a little bit too far down the road of.
For the comp plan?
But you know, if the house steps back, it depends on what the house looks like next. Second story windows on one house, the house that goes a story and a half or the arrangement is different. You know, that becomes a little tricky to use. But I think most people, it's what, uh, one is what they want to build in their house.
So they would have the flexibility to do whatever they want with the windows?
Yeah. It's not, it's not like these houses are a foot apart. There is space. How it's treated, that's really kind of the preference of the homeowner.
And you don't anticipate the association working on architectural standards or anything that's specific to you?
I don't think so. I think that becomes a bit bonus, but it's really up to. The law for operation. I would, I would say there's going to be a homeowner's association in each, whether it's for each different kind of unit out there or if it's one overriding master association that's going to kind of provide some oversight. I'm not one to get into such architectural detail in the notion of someone's owner's to kind of offset. But their other goal here is to have a horrible house. I started prescribing color and architectural style and, you know, motion groups. Then you kind of lost that whole.
We don't want them all looking alike. I mean, basically, we're just changing color or whatever. And, I mean, there, you, you can do that, you know, but I don't think, I don't think that's the, the look or the, you know, the feel that we're, we're really trying to get here. And most, most of those times, like if you don't have windows, um, you know, could be, could be the, the ba, you know, bathroom closet space, uh, you know, things like that along that wall, living room. If it's out on front, you got the street view. Maybe it's on your sidewall, if you have a fireplace or something, then you're putting up in the higher, the higher windows there that people can't necessarily see in, but you get light coming into the, into the room. So I think there's a lot of things we can do, you know, with that to, to make it function, you know, better than average.
I think you're fortunate in the way that you've laid it out and that at least by, by sun pattern, you're going to get sun in, one in, in the morning, and then you'll see it in, in the evening then too. The only ones that are going to be at the disadvantage are the ones at the front facing northwest, is they're going to take the ground to winter.
Not, not to go in too far into the weeds, but it would just occur to me, is there ever a, a neighborhood where they've kind of specified that we'd like the houses to all have windows on the same side, like the southern side, so that you're not looking into the neighbors? And so, and you're all kind of benefiting from being able to have a better light exposure on one side of your unit or your house? And then the other side, you don't, so that the next house can have their windows looking on the space between the, you know what I'm saying? So from that perspective, that.
Because that way you're, you're also, you know, the, the neighbor that's got the windows, then your windows are opposite. So then that other side is what the limited side is. So.
That's how you're, you're kind of doing the privacy.
Before, it's been some time. It's where the design of the neighborhood specifies basically what house to get the pick on. Page thirty-four of the catalog, you have your choice of these four houses. To me, that gets way beyond, you know, what role you want to play. But I've seen it happen, but I don't know how it's successful.
All right. Any other questions or comment or feedback for these guys tonight? Otherwise, I think what we're going to do is we're going to kind of review our next steps and some upcoming meetings and. Thank you. So in the packet, we had some anticipated dates here. I think Rodney's going to pull it up here on the screen. We want to make sure that we're all on the same page here. And there it is.
So later this month, plan to have the joint meeting with the planning commission and council, where we're opening up to the public to have comments again on that at a joint meeting.
So that's, that's a regular.
It's a council night, right.
What time are we talking about starting that meeting?
I think it'd be at the regular council time.
Okay.
Part of the council meeting.
And we do have a couple of presentations that night as well. I believe that's the night that Executive Parisi will be at the city council that night for a short presentation. And I want to say there's another group that was going to present that night, but I can't remember who they were off the top of my head. So we'll want to take that into consideration, but we can adjust the rest of the agenda for that.
And the next regular planning commission meeting is on June tenth. That's where you'd be really considering the public hearing version of the document that would be presented and able to be modified, but ultimately a consideration of a recommendation to council that night possibly.
Any questions about that or anything else you think we should be doing between now and then? Okay.
Maybe take a visit out, if any of us have time, take a visit out to some of those places just so we can get an idea of what we're looking at.
I noticed there's, there's a similar project being proposed. I think it's in Oregon right now as well. JSD was working on that one. So I don't think this is going to be, it's not uncommon. It's going to be more common out there. So it's not going to be just unique to Stoughton, but it'll be the first for us. So, um, yeah, I, I've driven through a couple. And if you guys have an opportunity to do so, I think it might be helpful. Any other future agenda items that anybody wants to talk about or anything that you might have, Rodney?
No, we've got the final plat things that will be coming up for future agenda items as well. And those will be working through the planning commission and council for consideration in addition to the conference of plan amendment.
All right. Otherwise, I guess I'm just looking for the final motion.
Adjourned.
Huh?
I said adjourned.
Okay. Motion by Seltzer, second.
Second.
Second by Caravelo, I guess. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Thank you.